Mr. Zanoni, with the work that we've been able to do and the access that I've had to him to express the concerns and the challenges that I have within the fire department. And so, the first enhancement you're going to see is that we're going to add 16 additional cadets to Academy Class 42 at a cost of $630,000. This will begin in January of 2020 and expands our academy class from 34 to 50. It addresses current and anticipated vacancies that we have in the fire department, but overall, for the long term, it'll help us out with our overtime. This is what our class cadet schedule looks like. Academy Class 41, we currently have 32 still left in the academy, and a variety of them will come out in different phases throughout that blue section that you see in the map with all of the cadets due to be out by June of 2020. You will have some, this was kind of an issue that you addressed with the police chief, some that come to us that already have their Texas firefighting certification, and so that shortens up the time that they have in academy, and we can get them out a lot quicker. Some come to us already having the paramedic portion of their background. If that's the case, then we're able to take those people in, but get them out quicker into the field. With the proposed academy schedule, fiscal year 2020, you will see the 50 academy class, academy class number 42, the 50 cadets that we're going to hire. We will hire those in January of next year and get that class started with the paramedic school. The next slide's very important because I wanted to highlight the position inventory history for the Corpus Christi Fire Department and talk about some of the historical changes that have occurred during that time period. I went back to 2003 to show that during that timeframe, 17 years ago, we were sitting at 394. But during that time period, the fire department has experienced unauthorized complement. We've had some historical changes that have come and taken place. We've added medic number nine, we added medic 11, and then Station 17 came aboard in fiscal year 2009, and you can see where the city did make an accommodation to increase the authorized complement of the fire department. But then during the fiscal year 2013, medic three and medic six were added, and then, as you remember, in fiscal year 2018, Station 18 was added, but we did not adjust our full-time employee complement during that time period. The next slide is our solution to the problem that we've had all throughout the fire department for the last eight years that I've been the fire chief, and that is finally coming up with a plan to hire enough cadets so that we can have enough firefighters, so that when firefighters experience, the fire department experience attrition, that we're able to have firefighters that are coming from the school, fill in the gaps that are created by the retirements, yet easing that overtime burden that we have. The goal is to have cadet-ready candidates ready to graduate when the retirements occur. And so, as you can tell, the graph shows you how we are currently 30 under right now for the fire department. So, we have 30 vacancies within the fire department, but with the aggressive hiring timeline that the city manager and I are proposing to you, we're able to get above that so that we can make up for that loss of staffing that we did not receive in past years. Our second proposed budget enhancement involves an additional medic unit at the cost of $360,000. This will be initiated on April 1st of 2020, and it requires overtime for two firefighters per day. It addresses our increasing call volume within the core of the city, but also it's addressing the overall improvement of response time that we need to see for the fire department. The next map shows you just the fire stations where the current ambulance complement is, but you can see a pin at where Fire Station 7 is. That is where the fire department is proposing to place medic seven at, and there's a variety of reasons why we're making that recommendation. A couple of them involve the heavy call volume in that area and the unit hour utilization that the fire department ambulance has experienced in that timeframe. We have examples in which unit hour utilization is over 40% for many of our ambulance companies. What that means is that during a 24-hour time period, for example, medic three, which is adjacent to Station 7, has a unit hour utilization of 42.68, and what that means is, is that 42% of the time of that 24-hour shift, those fire medics are out making calls, transporting people to the hospital, going on fire calls, making calls for service, and it's an incredibly high workload that we have on that station. As a matter of fact, Firehouse Magazine just came out with their new updated 2018 response survey, and once again, medic three is number eight in the entire country as the busiest unit throughout the United States. And so, the other factors that have impacted the selection of Station 7, as you can tell on the map, the dense population that we have in that area, as well as the area demographics. The area demographics dictate there's a lot of calls in that area, where Station 3 on Morgan, Station 8 on Costores, Station 11 over on Airline, and Station 10 over on Greenwood. All of those ambulances are definitely impacted by that, and you'll be able to see some relief for some of those stations that are running a heavy call volume. In the initial numbers that we have been able to evaluate for Station 7, we forecast that they are easily going to average between 10 and 12 calls a day, which means that they'll be able to lessen the call volume load on the other ambulances, but take some of that load from them and give them the opportunity to experience a less demanding unit hour utilization. Our third enhancement for fiscal year 2020 is the hiring of a fire protection engineer. This is where the one individual is being requested by the fire department. It'll be a civilian position, but what the whole plan for this is, is we want to restore the confidence in the plan's approval process by having this fire protection engineer, which is situated at the 2406 Leopard Building where Developmental Services is, and right at the beginning of the process, they're going to be involved with talking with the developers in making plans, but making sure that the plans are stamped and approved and then can be worked through. And so, we're very happy about restoring that position to the fire department. Currently, the fire department has to have plans sent to Fort Worth through a contractor to have them take a look at it. We believe that by bringing it in-house, it'll be more efficient and timely, and then also that this position will be primarily paid by fees assessed for the plans review process. And so, we think it's going to be better for the community, it's going to be better for the city, it's going to be better for the developers, and then we'll all be on the same page, working together with Developmental Services and with the fire department. Our fourth proposed budget enhancement has to do with increasing the contribution to the firefighter retirement system. We're looking at $165,000 contribution for the sustainability of the retirement system. It decreases the unfunded liability that it currently exists, and a task force will be formed to build a long-term sustainability plan. And on the last slide, I want to make sure for those of you sitting here in the audience and those viewing from your television or your computer, I want to remind you about Reverse Alert. Reverse Alert is our mass notification system that provides the community in the West Coast County with recent accurate and significant information from our local officials in times of emergency. Reverse Alert is used by emergency management, the fire department, and the police department to send emergency notifications out in case there is a need to publish information, emergency information, critical information to our residents. And with that, I am open for questions.
Mr. Hunter?
This time I was.
All right. I saw you making that reach.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a quick question on the engineer. I don't know necessarily how to phrase this question, but basically what I'm trying to ask is, is for the needed visits that an engineer, I'll just read what I have written down, what is the total number of needed requests per year that an in-house engineer handles or that y'all receive? Could we handle all of our requests with just one in-house engineer?
I believe we can. I work very closely with Nino on this dialogue and with her staff and with our fire marshal. We believe that right now with one fire protection engineer, we should be able to review all of the submitted plans that we have and get them turned around in a timely manner.
Okay. Thank you. That was my only question.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Chief, and I really appreciate bringing that in-house, the engineer on it. I think one of the issues we've had is a little bit of arbitrariness as we send this out after the fact changes. So, any comments on that with, once we come in-house, we approve the plans rather than we go out for the CFO and say, "Oh, nope, nope, you didn't get that one, we can't let you do it." What are your thoughts on that?
I think the whole plan, Councilman, is that by bringing it in-house, we'll have the fire marshal and his staff involved, we'll have the fire protection engineer there, we'll have the developmental services people there, and we take a look at a plan. Once plans are submitted and they're stamped, then that's what we go with. I think the only changes that need to be taken a look at is, if the developer comes in and wants to make some changes, obviously the changes need to go through that process, but I think it's going to streamline it, I think it's going to make it better, and I think it's going to make it more timely for our developers.
And thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zanoni. I think this is huge for us. Another, we're running almost 40,000 EMS calls now. How do we rank? That's about one EMS call for every eight citizens. Do we have frequent flyers? That just seems to be a huge number, and how do we rank as a city on that, that high percentage of calls?
As a city overall, from the Firehouse Magazine survey, we're number 47 in the country in terms of our call volume. The bulk of those calls are the medical calls, and so, we're always looking at different mechanisms to try to streamline whether or not they're frequent users of the system. There's different programs that we're taking a look at. One is a community paramedic program that we've looked at for the last couple of years. I think with the city manager, it's an item that I want to talk to him about to see if we can come up with a community paramedic program here. There's also a new program that the federal government is looking at called ET-3. It talks about the triage, treatment, and transport, the appropriate transport, getting the appropriate resources to a call. A lot of times, people are calling us because they don't have their medication, they need a ride to the hospital, and if we can figure out a way to get them into a social service area, because we're not social service people on the fire department, but what we can do is, maybe we can hand somebody a bus voucher or a taxi voucher to get them to their appropriate appointment. And so, a lot of the times, as people need help, they need case management for their particular illness, and the hospitals are also, we're reaching out to the hospitals to give us a hand because they're impacted greatly whenever we bring consistent patients back to the hospital. If it's within that 30-day time period and it's just for the same thing, they won't get paid. And so, they're looking at different avenues, but we meet monthly with the CCMC. We're starting monthly meetings with Spahn Hospital Group, but these type of items we discuss on a regular basis as to how we can address it. One of the problems is, is that we need to be able to intake the call and appropriately send the appropriate resources to the call, but we have to be very careful on how we do that because of the liability that exists, but we have to make sure that, working with this new ET-3 process, we're taking a look at it, we're not totally convinced that that's the route we want to take, but part of that process means that you have somebody at the intake being able to distinguish whether a call is a non-call or whether it's an emergency that we need to send the fire trucks and the ambulances to.
When you say we're 47th, is that in a percentage term or is that an absolute? Are we the 47th busiest in the nation as a percentage?
It's an absolute. So, the New Yorks and the Chicagos and the Los Angeles are up there, but then you have some heavy Houston, Austin, Dallas, Fort Worth, San Antonio are right up there also, and so, we've got the heavy call volume in the state, but that's just the way it is.
So, we have 60 cities that are larger and in some cases, much larger than us, yet we have a higher call volume.
You would be surprised. Cities like New Orleans, we surpassed them, Pittsburgh. There are other cities, but the thing to recognize is that Corpus Christi, because of the growth that we experienced, coupled with the loss of population for some of those big cities, we're moving up the ladder and some of those cities are moving down.
Okay. And one last thing. So, those calls, that doesn't include the, what, about three-quarters of the time, we'll send a regular unit out on there? So, we have three manning the medic unit and we'll have six firefighters out on a call?
Well, usually it's two persons on the ambulance.
Okay, two on the medic.
Yes, sir. When you see three, it's when we're doing proctoring of our cadets. They have to do a certain amount of ride-alongs, a certain amount of observed procedures. So, sometimes we'll have three, but two of them are on a daily, day-to-day basis, and depending on what the call is, I mean, you really want to have a fire truck and an ambulance there. First and foremost, the fire trucks have a little bit better response time than the ambulances because I have more fire trucks than ambulances, and so, with the way our system works, it's beautiful. I have other fire chiefs asking me how we get away with it, but by having paramedics on the fire trucks, you're giving ALS treatment right off the bat, and then when the ambulance gets there, we can get them loaded and get them transported to the hospital if necessary. But for those calls that are like the cardiac arrests and the trauma calls, accident calls like that, you want all hands working. So, generally, it's a fire truck and an ambulance, but sometimes it may just be a single unit. It may just be an ambulance, or it may just be a fire truck, depending on the call.
Okay. And I think one last comment, we earlier talked about the homeless. So, we saw the impact on PD, I'm sure there's impact here along with the county. So, Mr. Zanoni, if you're looking into that, it's just not one of our department, but it goes across the section. So, we look at that total impacts on there. Thank you.
Mr. Roy?
Again, thank you for your presentation. I think that the, you know, just looking at the call-response time overall is, I'm sure is a major concern. I would like to possibly consider, I have some concerns just out in the Cal Allen area. I wish that we had the ability to possibly have two additional medic units, and I spoke to the city manager, and if possible, I'd like to consider maybe looking at alternatives for that. I just think with the growth and also the fact that maybe, given the circumstances, that we may be able to actually capture some revenue there, I think it's important to at least take a look at.
Yes, sir. My original budget proposal was the additional addition of two ambulances was the original request that the fire department had made specifically for that reason. One, the operational need that we have with the Station 7, but secondly, with the Station 12, with the geographic need and the response time. I mean, you hit the nail right on the head. I've got a large gap, if we can have the map up on the screen, that shows the gap between Station 9, which is at Navigation and 37, and Station 2, which is in Annapolis. And so, there's a large gap between there, and as you noted, there's an increase in development going there, there are new homes being built, new neighborhoods coming in, Tolosa Midways over there. There's a variety of different reasons why the fire department heavily considered Station 12, and we will work with the city manager to see if there is any way that we could open up a second medic unit in the future.
Okay. If I can just add to that, so we set the budget based on our current estimate of revenues, both general fund revenues, the TAPS revenues as well, or TASPs, I'm sorry, revenues as well, and we have a good indication from the chief that the final check for the TASP payment will be in excess of what we have budgeted. And so, if that materializes, we would recommend to direct those dollars to that second EMS unit to take care of that Cal Allen area. It's two, there's two issues. One, there is an increased call volume, but two, brought to my attention is a legacy issue with the ESDs, the Emergency Services Districts, and so, this would take care of two issues if we focus on an additional unit in that area in between those two stations. You can see on the screen here, it will help to address that legacy problem that we know that exists and hasn't been addressed since the 60s, and then secondly, it will help that increase call volume. So, we're going to be working with the chief, we'll update you, the council, as the weeks progress, because that final check will come in in September, and we would recommend, if that does happen, which we have pretty good indication it will, that we add a second medic unit then to address that issue.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Can you expand on what your reference is to the legacy thing? I mean, I don't want to get us, I understand, but I mean, the taxpayers in that area are paying for a fire department out there, and they've got three or four or five units, fire and ambulance, and so, I mean, I understand the pride of who gets what, but...
Mayor, we pay.
Can you?
Yeah, I can.
I don't know what is the legacy or is it just competition for coverage or what?
Right. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. What both the fire chief and the fire union president have expressed to me is that the city, as we expanded back in the 60s, we encompassed an area, two areas of the city where an emergency services district had been in place, and state law says that the city that now annexes what was county territory can request the dissolving of the emergency services district that's there today. And normally that takes place, but there were two issues in Corpus Christi where that did not happen here in the Cal Allen area, and then also in the Flower Bluff area. And so, what you have is Corpus Christi residents paying two taxes, they're paying city property tax for the fire department service, and then they're also paying an additional, I believe, 10 cents tax on their home value to support the emergency services district. And so, what you have then is that homeowner paying the highest tax rate of any other resident in Corpus Christi, 10 cents additional to support two fire departments essentially.
I understand.
Corpus Christi's and the emergency services district. So, we want to address this issue somehow and try to come to resolution. It's a very big concern for the firefighters, as expressed to me by both the chief and the union president, and so, we want to see how can we address it? What's the solutions to one, have one fire department, but secondly, reduce that financial burden that these homeowners are paying because of that duplication of service?
Well, I was wondering if the implication of your answer is, you're going to do away with that fire district out there?
That's what we need to look at, yeah.
Which you really stir up hornets' nest in terms of a political...
Right, we would.
Everybody loves their fire departments, but they don't like paying the taxes, but that's the reality, they're paying double.
Right.
So, before we get...
There has to be a...
I think before we get too far down the road committing what we're doing, I mean, you've got to understand, you've got that battle to fight.
Right, we do. So, there has to be a dialogue with the community, obviously, with the ESD and the fire department, or the city, I should say.
Okay. And Mr. Hernandez?
Well, thank you for the information on the ESDs, and I believe the Flower Bluff one does 3 cents for every $100 valuation.
That's correct.
It's a little bit different from Annapolis. I noticed there wasn't any grants mentioned in your budget. Are you planning to ask for grants, and if so, how much, and what's the performance management thought behind it?
Thank you very much. Great question. Yes, we are always applying for grants on the fire department. One of the directions that we received early on was to go find money that would help relieve the pressure, and right away, a couple of grants that we got were the SAFER grant, which was for staffing of fire trucks, paid for 34 firefighters for two years and then nine personnel for a third year. And so, they're fluid in how they work, they come out annually, and then we make applications. So, for example, the latest ones that we've been able to submit for involve vehicle emissions, exhaust systems within the fire stations, but it's difficult to plan on them because there's no guarantee that the money will come. The only time we have, I don't want to say guaranteed money, but there's generally, industry has smaller grant programs, sometimes less than $10,000, that we rarely receive funding for, but for the most part, the large grants that we apply for to the federal government and to FEMA are ones that there's no guarantee that the money will come.
So, I'm sure there's other grants you can go for from the state and from other areas, but I mean, you just haven't a clear idea. So, do you have an idea of how much you're going for this year, this next fiscal year?
I'll have Deputy Chief Cantado talk to you about this issue.
Good morning. Richie Cantado, Deputy Fire Chief. That's a good question because it is one of those topics that, once you get into the floor, it becomes a regular item, is not always highlighted. So, thanks for bringing that up. We do have two programs in particular that we do highlight and we do apply for every year. The reason why it's not reflected on this pie chart is because compared to the rest of the funding, it's a miniscule part of it, so it's listed actually under fees and other, which together combined did list a little under $1 million. So, the two programs that I mentioned a moment ago in reference are EMPG, which is Emergency Management Performance Grant, and the second being Homeland Security Grant Program, both initiated at the federal level. They do require specific requirements, management responsibilities, and reporting responsibilities that we adhere to. Most of those have to do with the method of procurement, the inventory of the assets, the recording of activities and such in order to maintain eligibility for grants moving into the following year. All of the other ones, as the fire chief had mentioned, kind of ebb and flow depending on either a hot topic in the community, perhaps a specific need that we have that is highlighted throughout the fiscal year, which at times is not predictable. For those that have had foresight, the fire chief mentioned SAFER grant, which is staffing for adequate fire and emergency response. We did that back in 2016, which required a match of about 35%. So, that's another item that has to be considered. If we have a dire need, at that point, our staffing level was significantly in dire straits. We were able to get monies to approve for the match, made application, and we actually were able to bring 34 bodies onboard at only 35% of the cost. So, it is an item that, as a need, as it presents itself, then we do apply. As far as awareness to yourselves as council members, we do come to council to ask, request permission for approval, for acceptance, for appropriation expenditure of those monies when those opportunities arrive. So, that's the opportunity that we advise everyone here of those activities.
Councilman, just to piggyback off what the deputy said, usually the grant writers are myself or the chief or another chief officer will do the grant writing. We do have one grant administrator that does that follow-up. I forgot which council member was talking about that, but we do have somebody that takes inventory, makes sure that we're compliant with all of the elements of the grant to make sure that we're in compliance.
Okay. So, just looking at for future, if you could break that out, and then let's see what we can target and be more proactive in getting grants. Unfortunately, I do not have the line item budget, because I haven't received it yet, to determine what we have in matching, what you have in matching your needs in the budget. However, I do have another question.
I can address that. The reason why there's not one is because at the moment, we do not have a grant that applies to that. At the moment, we only have two. One is, again, that recurring grant or reimbursement from EMPG. The other is that we did apply for Homeland Security. However, while we are still in the grant cycle, we have not yet been approved. So, at the moment, if our applications are approved and we receive it, it'll be a little less than $300,000 for hazmat support and training, as well as for increasing capabilities of the SWAT team that's handled by PD.
Okay. So, my second question here, again, because I don't have the line item budget, is last year, well, in the approved budget for last fiscal year, you had $2,384,146 assigned for overtime budget, which is about 4% of your budget. What is your dollar amount for this coming fiscal year for overtime?
I believe it's $2.1 million now for overtime. Now, mind you, overtime includes holiday pay and other pay, so it's just not replacing people. So, that factor needs to be under consideration, and I think there was a 400...
Is this something that we need to change in the budget to reflect holiday pay versus just standard overtime? Is that a question?
If I can make sure that, first of all, that we're talking about the accurate numbers. We are talking about a change. Currently, in this fiscal year, our overtime budget is at $2.38 million. Next year, it's scheduled to be $2.7 million. That is inclusive of anything that, for the most part, requires work above 40 hours.
So, you're actually increasing your overtime budget?
It is being increased.
Yeah, if I can, though, it's being increased because they actually spend more than that. The chief has a high number of vacancies because of, several years ago, they didn't fill academy classes. So, we have to have firefighters, so the way we're doing it is we're having firefighters on an overtime basis, so they actually spend over probably $3 million, so we increase the budget this year to reflect reality. It's not to award more overtime necessarily, but rather to make sure that sufficiently budgeted...
Is that being taken from the other pay line item?
Not necessarily. It's coming from the general fund resources overall. We didn't reduce regular salaries necessarily.
Well, no, you have... Well, no, you have three line items. You have salaries and wages, you have overtime, and you have other pay, which I'm assuming is like specialty pay.
No, it doesn't come from, it didn't come from...
So it's just adding to the overtime.
It needs, right, we have to add to the overtime. All those regular or special pays continue.
Ultimately, what is the overall target? I mean, not considering this year, but going, what is your overall plan for overtime for this city in general? And I'll, and sorry, chief, chief back there, I looked at yours as well. You're at 2.7% overtime of the approved budget last year. I don't know what you have for this year, but...
Yeah, the goal, the chief can elaborate, but the goal is it's going to take us about two to three years with these higher academy classes. So you can see, we're adding 16 more cadets to the normal 34 cadet class, so we'll have 50. If we keep that up over the next two to three years, we'll be at a complete filled capacity, meaning our overtime budget will be reduced significantly, if not in half by close to a half.
So I mean, is your target below 2%, below 1%? What is the ultimate target? I mean, and I just want to look at it, not just from your department specifically, but citywide. I mean, we have, this is, overtime is a concern.
Right. Yeah, in fact, we have an overtime audit that's going to be presented by the city auditor next week, I believe, Councilman Smith. And we're doing a couple of things, not to get too far off track here, but one thing is we're doing is putting out a new administrative directive that says a director or a superior has to approve overtime before it actually incurs, unless it's some emergency situation, obviously. And so we need to get a better management handle on overtime, so employees aren't just taking it and then after the fact, it's being approved. So it needs to be prior approved, number one. Number two, every department has some level of overtime. In the fire department, their business across the country includes an overtime component when there's sickness or vacancies or those types of things, so...
Well, if you have a holiday pay...
Yeah, exactly.
...in that, then you have it as part of your structure. So you need to have actually some... And the reason I ask this is because I've always seen this as a performance management issue. And anytime where you have, you know, a situation where you have overtime, like manufacturing or whatever, it's a performance management issue for your director or for your mid-level management to say, how are you managing your overtime?
Right, and that's why, right, that's why I'm issuing that administrative directive that's going to place the oversight of overtime at that management level.
So is that going to be included in your performance management...
Absolutely.
...performance evaluation for your managers?
Yes, it will be.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, Ms. Gohardo.
Thank you. Chief Rocha, you, I'm going to go back to TASP real quick. What did you say the estimated amount was to come in?
For fiscal year 2020, $2.6 million?
2.6?
2.6 is what is in the budget.
Okay. And we talked about some of the repeat calls, if you will, for the medic units out here. Do those calls, are those the ones that you include in the regain of those monies through TASP? Or would that be something different, a possible grant? I mean, is that totally separate or would that be the same? Because I know I recall, maybe you could tell us what TASP, what they focus, what that focuses?
Sure. The big thing is the difference between what we receive in Medicare or Medicaid payment versus the actual cost of the service. It tries to recover some of that money, but also it tries to recover indigent transports that are performed for people that don't have any insurance at all. It tries to help us absorb the cost of indigent transport. So those two things are primary when it comes to task reimbursement.
Okay. That answers my question, because I was going to ask if you knew, if it was possible or out there may be a, you know, again, back to the grant, in terms of those repeat calls. But I don't know, you know, that may cross. It obviously does, but I don't know if a grant, such a grant would exist.
I have staff councilwoman going out and attending conferences, EMS conferences. The deputy and I will be at FRI, which is the big fire chiefs conference this year. It's in Atlanta. We'll be there for the next couple of days. These are some of the issues that we try to go out to see if there's grant opportunities or ways in which we can make our department more efficient. But the searching for grants and the looking for revenue outside of the city of Corpus Christi is a hot topic for us and it's one that I think we've been able to take a look at, but I think we've been able to produce for the city, new revenue coming in through task reimbursement, through aggressive billing by the new billing company and by the firefighters doing a much better job in documentation of calls for service and making sure that the rejects that we have for monies and claims made to Medicare, Medicaid, and to health insurance are paid for. So I think it's been a combination of great teamwork by the firefighters, fire administration, and by the city council of everybody working together, trying to get more money for the city.
And the new billing, the new billing company. So that's worked out very well then?
Very well. Yes, ma'am.
Good. Wonderful. Thank you.
Chief, a couple, just a couple of comments. I think you guys are doing a great job, but I mean, at some point, and I don't know when that is, at some point, I think we have to acknowledge and begin to do our planning based on the fact that we're really in the medical emergency business as opposed to the firefighting business. Statistically, you've got 38,000 calls for medical, you've got 297 fires.
It's between 75 and 80% of all of our call volume, Mayor. You're absolutely correct.
And the difference of response time on medical calls versus fire times is 39 seconds. So we get there pretty fast in either situation.
Yes, sir.
But in terms of your designing and building and equipping locations and things, I don't know what your plans are, but it appears to me, the numbers say that you really, we need to focus on medical response as opposed to fire response. Because fire response gets there pretty fast and medical gets there pretty fast, but I don't, if you're trying to improve response times, but, and the training and all that, I don't know how you make the two, but I know there's a lot of pride and a lot of territorial protection in whether it's fire versus EMS. But the services that we're providing, 38,871 to 297, that's a significant difference.
I would tell you, Mayor, my staff and I probably spend 80% of our time on EMS, on EMS issues, opioid issues, response issues, staffing of fire trucks, staffing of ambulances...
And on page 14, your historical changes, 2003 medic, 2008 medic, 2009 opened a new fire station, 2013, two medics, three and six. And so, I mean, that's the business we're in. And the good news is that we're not having that many fires because of good inspections, good building and development. So that's the great news, that fires are not as significant as, I mean, when we have one, they're bad. Don't get me wrong, but we have been very successful in addressing quality and building standards and safety and this sort of thing. So I applaud you for that, but I think as the process goes forward, we really need to focus on what our real business is these days. And the other thing, getting to the calls, I think Mr. Smith alluded to it a minute ago, I think he referred to them as frequent flyers. You know, I'm out of prescription, call 911, take me to the drugstore. I mean, that happens. The public may not believe it, but it happens, doesn't it? Yeah, I'm out of medicine, I'd call 911, get a free ride to the drugstore.
You would be surprised.
Well, and we've talked about this for years. So I think what we're suffering from, the paralysis of analysis. We've analyzed it, we know we've got a problem, but we haven't done anything about it. So I'm hoping that this year, that we can develop, I mean, we're going, there's lawyers out there, they're going to sue you if you don't say good morning in the right way. So I mean, the liability exposure, yeah, it's there. But we've really got to focus on the service that we're providing and the cost we're providing. And giving a guy a ride to the drugstore because he doesn't have a, he needs to have his prescription refilled, I don't really think has a role of a fire truck or an ambulance. But we've talked about it, we know it's a problem, but I think we've reached the point, we've got to do something about it. Develop a service, either, you know, put a red cross on an Uber call and say, call this if you're out of prescription. They'll give you a ride to the Uber station. Or call the RTA, they've got, they can get there cheaper than weekend from the city's standpoint. But I mean, I applaud the service we're doing. We don't want anybody to die because we don't respond, but at some point, you've got to be able to triage these calls and figure out some other way besides a fire truck and a police.
Yes, sir.
It's costing all of us and costing you guys a lot of money.
I would rather have, I would rather have that unit available for a real emergency versus emergency that's...
Absolutely.
It may involve the development of a community paramedic program where there's individual case management, and it's not only the fire department, it's going to be social services. We need, what these people need is case management. And so it's very easy to pick up a phone and call 911 because a firefighter's going to get there and as great of a job as the firefighters do, they're going to do what's best, you know, for that patient. But it's really what we're talking about when you have these frequent users of the system, is case management for their own individual plan. And so I think where the UC fire departments are having some degree of success is having a community paramedic program that's funded by the city for the fire department to use so that we can develop this case management. But right now, I'm in the business of trying to get ambulances and fire trucks staffed. And so if you're wanting me to do some more case management, it's going to require an investment by the city for us to do a community paramedic program. It doesn't come free, but there are some benefits to it. But it's all part of the process that we're looking at community paramedic, but this ET3 program at the hospitals and the fire service and medical transport's going to take a look at, where that initial call coming in, there's going to be some better management of that. So we're turning the rocks over and trying to find what it is, and it's more than just analysis. It's really, we've in the past, put together a community paramedic plan, but we're going to continue working toward that. And I hear you loud and clear. Now, we're going to, we want to reduce those calls and really have the units available for a real emergency, but it's people, it's learned by the people that we have is that it's very easy that if you need help, pick up the phone and call 911 and a police officer or a firefighter is going to get there.
We're going, and I think there's, the public has been trained over the years that government's going to solve all their problems, and I'm here to tell you, government is not going to solve all their problems. They've got to take a little bit of adult responsibility for some of this stuff and maybe we need to help them learn that, I don't know.
Yes, sir.
I think the council will support you in an effort to try to wean them off of emergency calls to get a prescription refill or...
Yes, sir.
You know, anyway, that could be a real goal. So, but I think you, the council and manager through his process, I think, shows that we're committed to first responders and fire and police to make sure we've got a safe community, but those that are taken advantage of and are abusing it, we nearly need to get that, rein that in, but...
Yes, sir.
Mr. Garza.
Mayor, just along the same lines, I know that somewhere along the way in the involvement of trying to reduce the number of fires or the severity of fires, the insurance companies and fire professionals started working on fire prevention inspections and everything else and looking at codes. And at this point, I mean, if you look at call prevention, you know, and see if there's some ideas or some things that some of the insurance companies, the medical, the medical insurers are looking to try to do to reduce the number of calls. I know you guys have worked together with Med, well, Med, in trying to see what you might be able to do in some areas that some people categorize, and I don't like the word underserved, but they categorize in those terms. But if, when you go to some of those workshops, that you look for grants and stuff like that, try to see if you can wind your way into some discussions related to call prevention.
Yeah, here's one. Right now, a Corpus Christi fire medic only has a couple of options as to where to take a patient. Hospitals, and that's it. So now you have these standalone clinics, these emergency rooms, you know, that's part of what ET3 is looking at is, can they open it up for the fire department to be able to transport a patient to a well-med facility or another type of facility that's a non-hospital? Our only options are hospitals. That's it. And so part of the evaluation that they think the federal government is doing is trying to determine what direction is emergency medical transport going into, because it costs a lot of money to staff these ambulances and Medicare and Medicaid costs. And so you're right on target, Councilman, but it's one of those things, we're going to look at every option to see if there's a way that we can become more efficient. Now with regards to, you talked about insurance, and ISO, those of you in the insurance business understand that it is based on what you have. So if there is a desire to get rid of fire trucks or lessen the amount of hose, and there's a variety of things that are measured through ISO, and Councilman Hunter can, is more eloquent than I am with regards to ISO, but those things are still necessary. So you're right, Mayor, you know, our business is EMS 75% of the time, but we have to be ready 25% of the time to answer those other calls of service. And ISO, with the rating that we have, which is a two, it's not a one, but certainly it could be a lot worse. We've got a really good rating. I think Councilman Barrera is also in the insurance business. But anyway, with that number, our citizenry pays less in taxes, or, excuse me, less in insurance, fire insurance rate because of how good the fire department is staffed and what we have.
Good. Mr. Roy?
So when you look at, you mentioned some of the cities that have improved and maybe some of the cities that have went the other way. In terms of looking at a benchmark or what you think that we're able to achieve as a city, do those programs that have improved, do they have components like the TC3? Is that what you called it?
ET3?
ET3.
It's a new program. It hasn't even been released yet, and they're looking for medical transport providers and others to participate in this ET3 study. I think it's going to last about three years or so, but it's going to talk about how a call's intake, patients treated at their home, transports made, the destinations made. All of that's going to be evaluated.
So in other cities, do you think in terms of the relationship in terms of the county and the hospital district and how they work, is there anything that we can do, maybe in conjunction with the county, to alleviate what we're going through in terms of this EMT experience and the...
We're the big neighbor, where our house is the biggest house, and so we really have the bulk of the responsibility. But the only thing I can think of is there is a hospital district that the county is responsible for and maybe just working closer with them. I know that Councilwoman Gohardo and I just attended an opioid meeting over at the judge's office, which talks about what you're talking about, Councilman, about collaboration with county and the city working together. And I think this is just an example, but we're definitely look at that and see what we can come up with.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Well, we appreciate your presentation, and I think one area that we touched on that will bring great joy, and it has nothing to do with ambulances or fire trucks at this point, is that the, in the development community, the coordination between their approval of their site plan, or their building plans, and when they go to get a certificate of occupancy, if they, if I understood you right, is when that builder leaves with an approved set of plans, then when he calls, you know, five days ahead of getting a certificate of occupancy, if he's built at the plan, it ought to pass.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's the whole, that's the whole idea. It's the developer, the fire protection engineer, and developmental services working together to make sure that whatever's agreed upon is what happens.
If that comes to pass, you'll have a very happy group of folks out here trying to get business done and get businesses open on time. So I applaud you for that and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, sir.
And I think all of us have gotten calls of frustration of where that has not happened in the past.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
That's a good stroke. Thank you.
Yeah, and Mayor, just the position will need council approval, but pending that and anticipating it, we've already advertised that position, so it's posted on our job board today, and we're already in the process of recruiting for an October hire.
Good. You may even get some support if you find the right person to do it before October. We might be able to find a little money somewhere, I don't know. Between now and October, there's not a whole lot of time left, so maybe we could reduce the council salaries or something to get it done. Anyway, no going. We'll see how committed we are. But thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. That, I think based on your schedule, that covers the departments that we're talking about?
That does cover it for today, Mayor. Next Thursday, we'll review the infrastructure departments. So we'll talk about streets and our bond program delivery, our engineering department. We'll also look at solid waste in our utilities, and we'll have a conversation about the water rate structure, the stormwater fee recommendation and that type of thing, the work to develop that. So that'll be next week. So I was looking over here as we were going through our morning, but next week's going to be a pretty, we'll see a lot of each other next week, beginning with council, actually with the first work session on Monday night, which will be in District 1 at Owens-Hopkins Library at 6 o'clock. Tuesday, we have a city council meeting, and I think the drone event is also Tuesday, right? Is it Thursday? Actually, Thursday.
Thursday.
Tuesday, then Wednesday, we have another community meeting that'll be in District community meeting. That'll be in District 3 at Lyndale Library. That's Wednesday. District 2, I'm sorry, at Lyndale Library. And then Thursday, we'll be back for another work session next Thursday. And then Thursday evening, we'll have another community meeting. So, there's going to be a lot going on next week with respect to the budget and council business, so.
Well, we appreciate you and the staff doing this, and we're looking forward to it. And anybody have anything else for the comment? Mr. Hernandez?
Yes, if we could, if you could provide the city council with the line item budget. There's some specific questions that one, that probably need, that I would like to ask, but I wasn't sure, basically, because I didn't have the information. Also, I'd like to say thank you for taking the time and appreciate what you guys do. I know I'm probably a little bit more into the weeds than most, but I appreciate it.
Yeah. And I think you need to move cautiously in the weeds, personally.
But that's okay. That's okay. That's me. But ultimately, it's ultimately because I want to make sure...
It's the organizational structure that we need to protect.
Ultimately, it's my hope that we can make this hall better, and that we improve the whole thing, aside from what the mayor said. Anyway, thank you.
Nothing else? We're adjourned.